Can you see it? Okay. Is there anybody in the basement? Is there anyone in the basement? Okay. More of our clock's fast.
It's a little fast.
Is it? Okay. I don't know. I turned myself on off, so I don't know. Hmm? You ready? Is everybody ready? I'd like to call the Monday, February 6, 2017 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mr. Epley?
Here.
And do I have a report on our minutes for our January 9 regular and work session and our January 19 executive session, Mrs. Hilton?
Your Honor, yes, thank you. I've reviewed with council the minutes from those three meetings, and I've found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those favor sign probably saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. So ordered. Members of City Council, honored guests, staff, and citizens of Oakwood, I am proud to proclaim that Oakwood, with a population of 9,202, continues to be the premier residential community in the Dayton and Miami Valley region. Why? Consider this: Next month, we will celebrate the grand opening of Lane Stadium, a multipurpose athletic field and track facility at Old River Sports Complex. Oakwood City Schools and the City of Oakwood and the Oakwood Athletic Boosters worked in collaboration to create a $4 million asset to benefit hundreds of Oakwood student athletes and others in our community. Incredibly, under the leadership of Chris Eifert and many other Oakwood residents, about 250 donors contributed over $3.7 million to fund this project. We salute the generosity of major donors Doug and Gay Lane and look forward to the dedication of this facility next month. We also thank the City of Dayton for their assistance with zoning issues and the University of Dayton for ingress egress to our site from the north. Their cooperation was instrumental to the success of this project. We must also recognize that this project would not have occurred without the contribution of Alan Rensler, formerly of Oakwood Investment Group. His efforts in 2006 enabled the city to acquire the Old River Complex from the NCR Corporation. Unfortunately, Mr. Rensler unexpectedly passed away in 2015. We have outstanding diversity in our housing choices. Although much of our housing stock is over 70 years old, our homes and properties are better maintained than any other city around, and our home values prove it. In 2016, 81 percent of Oakwood home sales were higher than the county appraised value. Everyone knows Oakwood has great schools, in fact, the finest public schools in the region. Our Oakwood schools are consistently rated in the top 1 percent in the state of Ohio. The Washington Post named Oakwood High School one of America's most challenging high schools in 2016. For an unprecedented fifth year in a row, the Oakwood High School Academic Decathlon team are national champions. This scholastic competition is unique because the team is tested in art, economics, language and literature, mathematics, music, and science, and participants are judged or in judged events in speech, interview, and essay. They competed with teams from the United States, Canada, China, and England. Congratulations to all the students and their advisor Lori Morris. We also welcome Kristi Hale as the new Director of Wright Memorial Public Library. For 77 years, they continue their mission to provide high levels of efficient, friendly, and personal service and to foster an atmosphere of intellectual liberty in the American tradition of free ideas. The city services offered to Oakwood residents are unsurpassed. We continue to provide weekly backyard trash collection, year-round curb collection of yard waste, fall leaf collection, and spring mulch delivery, and sidewalk snow removal. We were honored as a Tree City USA for the 34th consecutive year. Our Johnny Appleseed program has planted about 3,000 trees in Oakwood since the inception of this program. We commend the efforts of our Public Works Department and our horticultural staff in the Leisure Services Department. Formed in 1927, our Public Safety Department is the second-oldest consolidated department in the United States. It is unique because all our officers are cross-trained and state-certified in law enforcement, firefighting, and emergency medical services. Our first officer on scene response time for any emergency is under two minutes, by far the fastest in the region. Our fire engine response time is 4.2 minutes; the national standard is six minutes. Our medic response time is 3.3 minutes; the national standard is 13 minutes. Oakwood has the lowest crime rate and fire loss in Montgomery County. Where else will you find in a community of 2.2 square miles the parks, gardens, and green space found in Oakwood? We offer three neighborhood parks: Schaefer Park, Orchardly Park, and Fairridge Park. Our natural areas include Loy Gardens, Elizabeth Gardens, Houke Stream, and Centennial Park. Our recreation facilities include the Oakwood Community Center and Gardener Pool, the dog park at Krieger Field, Irving Field, Old River Sports Complex, McHummun Stadium, and now Lane Stadium. Oakwood also features beautiful public gardens, including Smith Gardens and Francine's Gardens. In 2016, we agreed to assume ownership of the Hollinger Memorial Tennis Center with its clubhouse and seven clay tennis courts. Oakwood's strength is its people. Our citizens are leaders in industry, education, medicine, and the arts. Please consider some of the events in which our citizens participated in 2016. In May, about 380 walkers participated in the 15th Annual Breast Cancer 5K Walk. Since its inception, the event has raised over $200,000 to support a cure for breast cancer. That day in May, sponsored by the city and the Oakwood Rotary Club, continued its tradition of pancake breakfasts, 5K and 10K runs, community parade, games, rides, refreshments, and displays. The successful Oakwood Farmers Market reopened on Saturday mornings from June to September and featured home-produced and gourmet food items and works of local artisans. The market was recently recognized by Dayton Magazine as the best farmers' market in the area. In July, Oakwood City Sister Association welcomed our sister city of Utramont, Canada, to celebrate the 40th anniversary of our twinning. The past five years have been financially difficult for our city and local governments across Ohio. In 2012, the Ohio General Assembly broke its 75-year covenant with local governments by taking for itself sales tax revenue previously reserved for cities, villages, townships, counties, and school districts. The General Assembly also eliminated the business tangible property tax reimbursement and the Ohio Estate Tax. Together, these actions reduced our annual revenue by about 20 percent. In December 2015, the General Assembly passed additional legislation benefiting certain taxpayers by eliminating their local tax obligations. When fully implemented, we expect this legislation will reduce our revenue by $250,000 annually. It is apparent that the Ohio General Assembly is no longer our partner in providing services to the citizens of Ohio. In addition, 20 surrounding communities have increased their income tax rates over the last several years. Because we give a 100 percent credit for taxes paid to other jurisdictions, for an Oakwood resident working in Kettering where the income tax rate is 2.25 percent, Oakwood only receives 0.25 percent of the 2.5 total taxes paid. In 2005, the City of Moraine increased their income tax rate from 1.5 percent to 2 percent and in 2014 to 2.5 percent. An Oakwood resident now working in Moraine now pays no income tax for Oakwood City Services. The Moraine elections reduced Oakwood 2016 revenue by $124,000. The cumulative effect of all these income tax rate increases by surrounding cities reduces our revenue by about $450,000 annually. In 2016, the City of Dayton increased their income tax rate to 2.5 percent, and the City of Centerville increased their income tax rate to 2.25 percent. Their tax increases will result in an additional $360,000 revenue reduction in 2017. This situation is not sustainable. Because of the sound judgment from this and previous city councils and revenue from the now repealed Ohio Estate Tax, we have municipal facilities that will support our city for a generation or more. We own the Old River Sports Complex; we made Sugar Camp and Point Oakwood infrastructure improvements with no adverse impact to Oakwood City Schools revenue. We reduced city property taxes in 2008. We had no city property tax increase for 22 years until 2013. We have not raised city income taxes in 32 years, and we have no outstanding debt. Our actual expenses went down each year between 2009 and 2014. Our citizens pay less for water and sewer than most people in the Miami Valley. Through retirements and productivity improvements, we have reduced our city staff by 12 percent since 2004 with no reduction in city services. We made our refuse program self-supporting by reducing expenses and increasing the monthly refuse charge. We established a stormwater utility to account for the cost of this program. We increased fees and reduced expenses at the Oakwood Community Center. In spite of our prudent fiscal management, we may need to ask for additional revenue in 2018. If needed, we will openly discuss this issue with our community. I am confident our citizens will support the recommendations or actions of City Council. Because it is a well-established fact that local government is the most accountable and responsive government, we represent you and will see that our city provides the services you believe are important and necessary. And in doing so, we will prudently manage the resources our community provides. City Council thanks our community for approving our property tax renewal levy last fall with a 72 percent affirmative vote. When I joined City Council in 2003, it was my belief that Oakwood was well-governed, well-managed, and financially strong. I still hold that belief and will continue this tradition. I would like to thank the citizens of Oakwood for allowing me to represent them as a member of Oakwood City Council for the past 14 years. I would also like to thank Oakwood City Council for allowing me to serve the city as mayor for the last seven years. I also serve as Vice President of the Greater Dayton Mayors and Managers Association. With council's approval, I will serve as President of the Association in 2018. I am proud to serve with Vice Mayor Steve Byington, who begins his 10th year on City Council and represents our city on the First Suburbs Consortium of Dayton and Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. I'm also proud to serve with Rob Stevens and Ann Hilton, each of whom begin their eighth year on City Council, and Chris Epley, who begins his fourth year on City Council. This council, like those that preceded it, operates in a collegial style, and everyone believes in doing the right thing for the citizens of Oakwood. We listen to one another; no one has hidden agendas, and we believe in community service. The excellent services provided by our Public Safety, Leisure Service, and Public Works Departments would not occur if not for the leadership of City Manager Norbert Klopsh. He is recognized throughout the region as an outstanding city manager. He is also blessed with a fine group of department directors, including Deputy City Manager, Personnel Director, and Zoning Official Jay Weiskircher, who has served our city with class and distinction for 34 years. A special mention also belongs to Carol Collins, our Leisure Service Director, who has served our city for 42 years. With the help of City Council, city staff, and the citizens of Oakwood, we will continue to be well-governed, well-managed, and financially strong. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve. And that is the State of the City address.
Thank you.
Another thing that was left off our agenda, we had three other appointments to council or to city committees. We have two members to add to our Budget Review Committee, as you recall. That's a 35-member committee consisting of five people from each of our seven voting precincts. And we have, in Precinct C, Nick Ensley has agreed to serve, and in Precinct D, Yasaku Kawai has agreed to serve. And then we have one vacancy on our Environmental Committee. John Rasmussen has agreed to renew his term. So I would make a motion that we approve those three openings in our committee.
I second that motion.
Thank you. All right. All those favors, probably saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. That will be so ordered. So I'm going to take a drink of water. It is now the visitors' portion of our meeting this evening, and if anyone wishes to come down and address council, please come down and state your name and address for the record, and we have a visitor. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Masha Kissel, and I live at 101 Oak Knoll. Nice to see everyone again. So today, I wanted to, first of all, thank City Manager Klopsh. We had a really great meeting with him about making Oakwood more sustainable. He gave us some great ideas for community initiatives, and I also spoke with Tim Pritchard from Metro Parks, and he told me that you will be hosting a composting class at the OCC. So I really appreciate you moving so quickly on this and responding to us. I also wanted to report back that our little informal coalition of citizens interested in sustainability has been very busy since last time we met, primarily in educating ourselves about the resources we have for sustainability projects in the county, and I'll speak about that in just a second. We've made contacts with people in the community. I wanted to mention that the Oakwood High School Eco Club is currently working on, I think, competing PSAs about recycling, and I hope if one of them is appropriate that the city would consider putting it on its website to promote recycling in Oakwood. I'm still waiting to hear back from the advisor of the club, from the faculty advisor. I also wanted to mention that we are in the process of planning some programming with the Wright Library for the spring that will educate kids about sustainability and recycling. So although there are many exciting community initiatives going on, and a number of us are also involved in the master recycling program at the county, so we hope to be even better stewards and educators in our community as time goes on. But I did want to say that although Oakwood's recycling rates are, I think, some of the best in the county, if not the best in the county, according to Dan Grader, we are recycling about 40 percent of materials that could be recycled. So I think that our rates can be improved. And of course, the single most important factor in improving recycling rates is individual habits, but as we all know, those are guided by local policy and local culture. For instance, you know, you mentioned so many wonderful things about Oakwood. We are a walking city; we are a tree city. Some of those and those qualities have to do with policy. It's hard to be a walking city if you don't have sidewalks, right? So hearing about some of the financial difficulties, all of my suggestions will primarily concern education and awareness, but I do ask for the city's leadership in these initiatives. So the first thing I wanted to mention is that the county has grants available to townships or municipalities that are interested in waste reduction programs. I propose that we set some kind of a measurable goal for 2017 in increasing our recycling rates and waste reduction. So the grants are available, but there is a meeting at 9:30 on February 8 this Wednesday at the Montgomery County Transfer Station at the Administrative Building that someone would need to attend as a representative of Oakwood. It's an informational meeting, but in order to have those funds available, somebody would need to go there. So I wanted to pass that information on. And I wanted to ask the City Council to make some kind of a public commitment to sustainability. We are leaders in education; we are the tree city; we have parks. We are doing really well, but I think that making specifically the goal to become even more sustainable and even more green is really meaningful, especially in leading other municipalities and townships in the same direction. So I'd like us, as I mentioned, to set a recycling collection increase goal for 2017. A longer-term goal, which again would, at this stage, be mostly symbolic, would be to set a zero-waste goal at some point in the future. In speaking with Dan Grader at Montgomery County, he said all cities will have to be zero-waste eventually, and setting a goal now makes sense, just as a symbolic aspirational gesture. And finally, I was thinking that an event like the Ice Cream Social or that day in May could be a kind of a test run where we set a waste reduction goal or recycling goal and try to meet it. In order to do this, I propose forming either an independent citizen task force and working with the county to set goals and to measure them, or perhaps creating a branch of the Environmental Committee that would set these goals and then try to measure their success. That's all I've got. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them or to follow up.
It sounds like you've been very busy since our last meeting.
Yes.
Well, we appreciate all your efforts. Does anybody have any specific questions for her?
Yeah, you'd mentioned that you have a group of people participating, going to various different events and learning things. Could you give us an idea of how many folks we're talking about, just so that, I mean, we're always very proud of the fact that we've got 35 on our Budget Review Committee, and, you know, knowing exactly how many folks are working in these areas helps us to recruit more people and, you know, if people think that you only have two or three members who are doing this, that they might not be as inclined if you had, say, 20 or 30 people working on these things. Can you give us a little bit more information on that?
Yeah, of course. So, I mean, this informal coalition's very new. I basically just, we just formed since the last meeting. Hopefully, we're growing. There is a Facebook group called Green Oakwood that is 70 people. The number of people that have been going to field trips, who are signing up for master recycling classes, who are being very active, I would say, is, right now, between four and five.
Okay. Well, I think, to some extent, your four or five have done more in a month than some of our committees do in a quarter. So that's good to know. And I also think that this needs to be a grassroots effort, I think. I mean, clearly, we can stand up here and say, "We want everybody to recycle," but it is a culture change for some folks. Again, I drove down by the Public Works Building just this morning, and the cardboard was overflowing again. Now, that's good. I mean, on the one hand, it shows that Oakwood people buy a lot of stuff, but at least we're getting that word out that, you know, "Hey, let's recycle this cardboard because it can, in fact, be recycled, and we can actually make a little bit of money doing it." So I, I'm not certain this is on point, but I just have to say it because I spent the weekend watching the Waste Management Phoenix Open. They had 260,000 people that come to this event over four days, and the Waste Management people who sponsor it are saying that this was a total zero-waste event. Now, that could be corporate hype, but there didn't appear to be a whole lot of trash laying around, and it looks like they had recycling containers all over that golf course. And they had, they had, all the golfers were wearing green, and, I mean, it was a whole shtick. But it was a good golf tournament, too. But I think if you can have 260,000 people over a weekend and get close to zero, you know, our 9,200 people ought to be able to do better than just 40 percent recycling. So I think council's committed to this. We're trying to work our way through, trying to figure out, how do we make this, you know, a grassroots up as opposed to a top-down?
Yeah. And again, at this stage, I'm not asking for any drastic policy. I think symbolic gestures and words are really important, especially when they come from the City Council, and crafting our mission and our vision, including sustainability, I think, can be really powerful.
Okay. Very good. And you'll relay this to Carol as well? Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address council? Yes, please identify yourself, name and address for the record, and welcome.
Sure. Thank you. Eric Greathouse, Mayor. I live at 509 Volusia, I'm a neighbor of Norbert's. And I don't know, later on in the agenda, I know there's going to be reviewing legislation, possible ordinance on the medical marijuana. I don't know if there's going to question and answer at that point.
We're going to have a public hearing, and you would welcome to...
I will then wait to that point.
Is that your issue?
Thank you so much.
That's great. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll then close the visitor section of our meeting this evening, and then we'll go to legislation. And our first item is an ordinance to declare Shroyer Road a work zone. Mr. Stevens is going to introduce that or review that.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. This is an ordinance to declare Shroyer Road within the city limits of Oakwood a work zone to establish a temporary speed limit of 25 miles per hour and to impose double fines for speed violations in said work zone during construction of the 2017 Shroyer Road Improvement Project, which is actually ODOT project ID number 97897. This is the second reading of an ordinance that was introduced at last month's council meeting. This ordinance will temporary, will put temporary safety measures in place for our 2017 Shroyer Road Improvement Project. It does three things. It declares Shroyer Road as a, quote, "work zone" for the duration of the project. It reduces the speed limit from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour during the project and allows our municipal court to impose double fines for speed violations in the work zone. As I mentioned last month, this is not something we usually do with our annual paving projects, but this will be a very extensive project and will take several months to complete. These temporary measures will promote safety during the project, which is always our primary concern. This is the second reading, so I move that council adopt this ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion or questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
All right. Then, next, we have an ordinance and a public hearing to consider a zoning code text amendment to prohibit medical marijuana-related businesses and/or home occupations within the Oakwood zoning districts. Vice Mayor Byington will introduce that.
Yes, Your Honor. This is, as you mentioned, an ordinance to enact a new section of our Code 408, Medical Marijuana, of the Oakwood Zoning Code. As we've all seen in the news, Ohio House Bill 523 went into effect on September 8, 2016, and certain forms of medical marijuana are now legal under state law. Part of our job as members of City Council is to consider how new types of businesses should be zoned in our city, and we asked the Planning Commission to review and consider an ordinance to amend our zoning code to prohibit medical marijuana-related businesses. The Planning Commission advertised and held a public hearing to review this ordinance on January 4, 2017, consistent with our procedures for amending the zoning code. Following that hearing and their deliberations, they voted four to zero to recommend approval of the ordinance. The proposed ordinance is now before council, and we are going to conduct our own public hearing tonight. This is the first reading of the ordinance, so I will not be making a motion tonight. I would like to ask the Law Director, Rob Jacks, to ma- I would like to ask the Law Director, Rob Jacks, to make a staff presentation on the state of medical marijuana law in Ohio at this time and, and this proposed ordinance, and then ask Mayor Duncan to open the public hearing.
Mayor Duncan, members of council, thank you very much. It's not often that I get to come down here and address you from in front. I'm usually sitting there silently observing and watching what we do here. My job tonight is to tell you about a change in Ohio state law relating to medical marijuana and talk about how that possibly impacts the city of Oakwood, and to talk about how, how we can zone that or what options are before the City Council tonight. There is a proposed text amendment to the zoning code that you'll be considering. You'll be doing a public hearing on that tonight. I assume that all of you have read that proposed ordinance. It's already been through the Planning Commission. There is one minor clerical change that I made to it after the Planning Commission voted on it, and that was simply to add three words on the premises. Those words were not in there at the time the Planning Commission reviewed this. I'll talk about that as we get to the end of this. It did not change the substance of the ordinance, but was more of a clarification, and I'll explain that to you as we go along. What I want to talk about are a few things, and I'm going to give you some background on the state law, which is House Bill five twenty-three. I'm going to talk about how we got here, which is to say, how do, how do we have legalized medical marijuana in Ohio now? We'll talk about what the law does, some of the economic implications of the law, municipal regulation options for medical marijuana, and then you can tell that this is a holdover slide from when I presented this information to the Planning Commission. We won't talk about the Planning Commission's role, we'll talk about council's role in this decision tonight. So, as you know, June eighth was, was when Ohio became the twenty-fifth state to enact medical marijuana legislation. This is something that is, that is sweeping the United States, and in some ways, it's happening far quicker than people imagine it would. For other people, it's happening much slower than they thought it might, but it is here, and it appears that it's, that it's here to stay. I've attended a couple of different legal seminars and presentations on this. One was a seminar put on this past October by the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association. The other was a Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission event down at Sinclair in December. And the big consensus that I'm getting from, from municipal law directors all around Ohio is that there's a lot that we, that we don't know under this new law. They've, they've legalized medical marijuana, and they've said, "There you go, it's legal," but there's a lot still left to be figured out in terms of how this law is going to be implemented. So, that's what we're going to talk about tonight. One thing to bear in mind is that medical marijuana is still illegal under federal law. Now, the Department of Justice has, for some time under the Obama administration, made it very clear that they're not going to attempt to prosecute medical marijuana distributors, dispensaries, things like that, or even lower-level users. They also won't challenge state laws in those states that have made this legal. However, some of you may be aware that we had an election this past November, we have a new administration now, and we don't know what will happen under the new administration. Certainly, President Trump has made some statements that would indicate his support for medical marijuana itself as opposed to recreational or other uses, but we don't know, at this point, we don't even know what his cabinet is going to look like, and so we don't know how they're going to approach this and what changes may be coming down the pike, if any. How did House Bill five twenty-three come about here in Ohio? Well, back in two thousand and fifteen, there were independent polls that were conducted, and, and this was something that was very popular here in the state. Ninety percent of Ohioans supported legalized medical marijuana, but only fifty-three percent supported legalizing small amounts for personal or recreational use. It's pretty clear that, that there was a preference for medical marijuana, but not nearly as many that were, that were sure about having it available for recreational use. You probably remember the Ohio Marijuana Legalization Initiative, that was issue three back in two thousand and fifteen. That was a ballot initiative that would have put, that would have legalized all forms and all uses of marijuana here in the state of Ohio. That issue was defeated with over sixty-three percent voting against the initiative, thirty-seven percent in favor. When that happened, lobbying began in earnest at the state level, and this is a nice little photo of Bud Man with the legalization van going around to a number of different events. There's an intensive effort to lobby. In March of two thousand and sixteen, a group called the Marijuana Policy Project proposed an amendment to the Ohio Constitution. That amendment would have legalized medical marijuana. It would have permitted a number of things. Number one, homegrown medical marijuana. People who needed to, to smoke medical marijuana would be able to grow it in their own backyard. It would have authorized all products and methods of consuming products, whether that's smokable forms, vapable forms, or any of the, the other forms that we'll talk about here tonight. Would have authorized a very wide range of qualifying conditions. We'll, we'll get to the list of what's been approved under this new law, but suffice it to say that under the Marijuana Policy Project Initiative, there, it would have been a much broader list than what has been enacted here in Ohio. And finally, the Marijuana Policy Project Amendment would have allowed marijuana to be recommended by physician assistants and nurse practitioners as well as physicians. So, certainly broader than those classes of, of people who can issue prescriptions for medication under any current medical laws. This would have allowed PAs and nurse practitioners to be issuing recommendations or referrals for medical marijuana. So, with that, the medical, I'm sorry, the Marijuana Policy Project started a petition drive. They needed three hundred and five thousand valid signatures by July sixth to put that on the ballot in November of two thousand and sixteen, and they appeared to be well on their way to reaching that. House Bill five twenty-three was introduced in April of that same year. It was really an attempt, I think, to head off that petition drive, and it passed on May twenty-fifth, and this petition drive for a constitutional amendment was immediately suspended. You might think that's the last word on it, but Ohioans for medical marijuana are on record saying, "We still have much work ahead of us to improve this imperfect law while holding state lawmakers and regulators to the promises contained in House Bill five twenty-three, but we are proud of the role we played in getting this law enacted." I draw your attention to this last sentence. "We plan on working to better this program utilizing our amendment as a roadmap for those improvements." So, the Ohioans for medical marijuana are still strongly in favor of expanding the law that we now have, it's known as House Bill five twenty-three, and getting to some of those things that I talked about a little bit ago, the expanded qualifying conditions, the broader variety of forms of marijuana that would be available and so forth. But, House Bill five twenty-three is now law, and we have to figure out how to make it work. So, what does House Bill five twenty-three do? And we're just going to talk about some of the, the general provisions in the law. Went into effect on September eighth. It allowed only certain uses or certain forms of marijuana to be consumed as medical marijuana, and that's vaporization, tinctures, edibles, patches, plant materials, and oils. Vaping, I think we, we're all getting familiar with what that is. We see that around... Tinctures are an alcohol-dissolved liquid that can be drops on the tongue or in the mouth. Edibles are edible forms, whether it's baked goods or, or other kinds of items that are cooked with marijuana or prepared with marijuana in them. Patches would be transdermal patches. Plant materials, to be honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure what that would encompass. It's not already wrapped up in any of those other forms. And then oils, which would be a variety of hemp oils, THC oils, and things like that. The one thing you'll notice that's missing from that list is smoking. Smokable marijuana is still not permitted under the current medical marijuana law. So, while you might encounter people who are engaging in some of these other behaviors, vaping, tinctures, et cetera, you're not going to see people smoking marijuana in a manner that would be legal under House Bill five twenty-three. The law does provide an affirmative defense for people who are facing drug charges, and it's important to note that these are drug charges under state law, not federal law. So, someone who's charged with violating federal law has no defense under House Bill five twenty-three. It's still illegal under federal law. But if you're charged with marijuana possession under state law, you can assert your compliance with the medical marijuana law as an affirmative defense to that charge. On the screen in front of you, you see a list of the qualifying diagnoses that would, that exist to allow a patient to partake in medical marijuana, and I'm not going to read through and analyze everything on the list there. It's a fairly broad list and fairly specific. The one I would draw your attention to is the last one on the list, which is item V, "Any other disease or condition added by the State Medical Board under the Ohio Revised Code provision," there at forty-seven thirty-one point three zero two. That's what, what lawyers like to call a catch-all provision. They've specified a list, but they've left the door open for the State Medical Board to declare other conditions that would also qualify for this, and that would not require going back to amend the state statute. The State Medical Board would be able to promulgate additional conditions to expand that, and that would take effect. Excuse me. So, how is this law going to be implemented? Well, the state has now created something called the Medical Marijuana Control Program, and, and that's overseen by a Medical Marijuana Advisory Committee that will enact regulations for medical marijuana in the state of Ohio. This is part of the State Board of Pharmacy and the Ohio Department of Commerce. Some of the functions are overseen by, by both of those state agencies. Municipalities are not entitled to membership on the committee. This committee is to be up and to be fully operational and promulgate all their regulations and have everything in place and operating by September twenty eighteen, which, as you know from, from legislating things here at the local level, sometimes legislation is a slow process. It can be even slower at the state level, and when you're talking about administrative agencies and regulations, I think the takeaway here is I'm, I'm not super optimistic that September twenty eighteen is going to be a deadline that they're going to meet in terms of having a full array of regulations in place to implement this, but that is the goal that's been set by the statute. When I say regulations, some of the things that they're going to be overseeing and coming up with regulations for are the state licensure of cultivators, processors, retail dispensaries, and testing laboratories. That would be the, the commercial processing and distribution of medical marijuana. They will also come up with regulations for the registration and certification of physicians who can recommend treatment with medical marijuana, and then they are going to be responsible for, for devising reciprocity agreements between the state of Ohio and other states that have legalized medical marijuana. The Ohio Medical Board is, right now, discouraging physicians from recommending medical marijuana to their patients until that physician has obtained a certificate to recommend from the board. Problem is, those certificates are still in development. As of right now, we have no idea what the doctors are going to have to, you know, what educational requirements they may have to meet, what steps they will have to follow in order to get that certificate, what requirements might be attached to that, et cetera. I will say that, and this is kind of an aside, even as we have this new law and we're trying to figure out how to implement it, there are already efforts underway to change it and to shift... So, we've got kind of shifting sands here in the legal landscape, and an example there is House Bill five ninety-seven that was introduced this past September, and it would amend House Bill five twenty-three to restrict reciprocity agreements so that we could only enter into them with states that have restrictions similar to Ohio's. That's not taken effect at this time, and we've, but just be aware that there are still changes to come on this front. Let's talk about the economy of medical marijuana. According to a study by Marijuana Business Daily, retail sales of medical marijuana in Ohio could reach four hundred million dollars annually. It's a big number. That would represent approximately twenty-three million dollars in state sales tax revenue. And it's important to note that medical marijuana is not considered a drug, so it's not exempt from state sales tax. And the reason it's not considered a drug is that drugs are, are scheduled and overseen by the federal government. We're, we're regulating medical marijuana in Ohio under a different scheme now. That'll also come up, well, later in my presentation, you'll notice that physicians cannot issue a prescription for medical marijuana. Instead, they can issue a recommendation or a referral for that. Now, there are no tax-specific provisions in House Bill five twenty-three. That remains to be determined. I think a lot of people are thinking that, that, you know, Ohio cities are going to see a windfall of revenue from this as well, but what we're seeing is that this is going to be at the state level primarily, state sales tax. You know, in Ohio, cities used to impose and collect their own sales taxes, and we don't do that anymore. That's been replaced by a state and county system where it's all paid in centrally, the state collects it, and then they kick out portions of that back to the municipalities through something called a local government fund. Contrast that to cities in California where they can impose a municipal sales tax. And I'll just tell you, for example, in, in Oakland and another couple of cities in California, what they've done with medical marijuana dispensaries is they've, first of all, they've put a twenty to thirty thousand dollar permit fee on these businesses. That's an annual permit fee just to have your license to operate that, and then they also take, depending on the city, between one point eight and two point five percent of your gross sales revenue in the form of, of taxes to the city. So, in a place like that, that could be a, a revenue windfall for the local municipality, but we don't have that option here in Ohio. Instead, what we do have, business income taxes are the same kind that we can, that we can collect from any other business. I don't know what the salary or hourly wage is for your typical employee in a medical marijuana-related business, but, but the city could certainly collect business income taxes on those employees, payroll taxes as well on those employees. The businesses would be paying property taxes to the extent that they own the properties that they're located in or, or, you know, pay property taxes through the rent they pay their landlord, who in turn pays the property taxes. And there might be some permit fee revenues that would be available for something like this, although it's important to note that we don't currently, here in Oakland, we don't, we don't charge permit fees for a variety of types of businesses. So, in order to do that, we'd have to articulate specific reasons and justifiable bases for those permit fees if we were going to charge them. Primarily, we're looking at business income taxes, payroll taxes, and property taxes as the type of revenue that could be seen from these businesses. Now, how would those taxes be paid? How would those revenues come into the city? Well, that's a good question under medical marijuana. There are banking issues, and, and you may have seen articles like that in the newspaper. Most of these dispensaries in, in other states, what we're seeing is that they're cash-based businesses, and that's of necessity. They can't deposit their money in federally chartered banks because the drug is still illegal under federal law, and there's some, there's some certainly gray areas, if not outright illegality, about depositing those in the bank. So, instead, they're cash businesses. They keep large amounts of cash on the premises, they pay for everything in cash. You know, theoretically, we could have, you know, coming in to pay tax bills and things like that here in the city, bringing in a wheelbarrow full of cash. That's not uncommon with these businesses. All that cash leads to security issues, which can, which can involve increased Public Safety Department costs. One thing that the state law is, is trying to do to lessen some of those burdens is what they call a closed-loop system, and that's something that this committee is to promulgate through regulations. We don't know what the closed-loop system will be. What I've heard described is that it may be something like a prepaid debit card that's used to pay for medical marijuana purchases, that you can, you know, a balance would be loaded on there, and you'd carry a declining balance, and that would be maybe administered through the state as opposed to through a banking institution. No one knows at this point, other than the fact that they've been directed to come up with some sort of a closed-loop payment system. So, what can cities do with regard to medical marijuana? Facilities. Now, built into the statute, there's a, there's a built-in zoning provision, if you will, that says these, these businesses have to be at least five hundred feet away from a church, public school, public library, public park, or public playground. And unlike liquor establishments, that's mandatory. It's not waivable, it's not variable. It's got to be at least five hundred feet from any place like that. Right there on its face here in the city of Oakwood, that's going to limit the number of locations that would even potentially be available for this kind of business, although some spots could arguably be found. Also built into the statute, and that's the second one you'll see there, High Revised Code, Section three seven nine six point two nine, says that "The legislative authority of a municipal corporation may adopt an ordinance to prohibit or limit the number of cultivators, processors, or retail dispensaries licensed under this chapter within the municipal corporation." And that power extends even to prohibiting it altogether. Municipalities can regulate the location of facilities, they can prohibit or limit the number of facilities, and they can entirely prohibit facilities from being located anywhere in the municipality. Those are, those are really the, the zoning options that we have. Aside from, from that, in terms of zoning where they're located, a lot of cities are doing things relating to signage regulations that would apply to these businesses, security regulations, which, again, I think ties into the, the large amounts of cash that are often kept on hand, as well as the, the product itself, which can be a target for thieves. So, you'll see zoning regulations that require guards, safes, cameras, you know, special security lighting, that kind of thing. You can have operational zoning regulations, such as the hours that they're allowed to be open, amount of seating, that sort of thing, same types of regulations that we have for other businesses. You'll see some zoning requirements related to the cultivation area. That's particularly for indoor facilities, but also for outdoor, and height limitations on the plants or on the facility itself. And then you'll see some zoning regulations that get into retail floor area restrictions, just kind of trying to control or regulate the... just kind of trying to control or regulate the size that can be taken up by these businesses. Here in Ohio, we're seeing three real approaches to this, and keep in mind, this is against that backdrop of, you know, sort of the shifting sands that the state of Ohio has handed us. We don't know exactly what's happening in terms of implementation. Some cities are saying, you know what? We're going to permit it. We're going to permit it in certain zoning districts or in all of our zoning districts. We want to encourage this. We've got plenty of spots for it. We're going to adopt laws specifically permitting this here. And Johnstown, which is, I think, a little northeast of Columbus, has taken that approach. Prohibiting it is obviously the exact opposite, and that's a declaration that we don't, we're not going to permit it in any of our zoning districts, or perhaps we're going to not permit it in certain zoning districts. Hamilton has taken that approach, and they've barred it in all of their zoning districts. And then there's what we call a temporary moratorium. You may have seen stories about that in the Dayton Daily News of late. Beaver Creek has done that. Troy has done that. Pickler, there's a number of other cities around Ohio, and really, that's more of a wait-and-see approach. The moratorium is usually for a fixed period of time. We're going to do a six-month moratorium, or nine months, or a year, and really, that's to afford more time to wait and see what these state regulations are going to look like before acting and figuring out how we're going to incorporate that into our zoning What you have in front of you tonight, the ordinance that's been proposed, it's already gone through the planning commission, this is that second approach, what I'll call the Hamilton approach there. This is an ordinance that would prohibit it here in Oakwood, and that's generally on the theory that there are very few, if any, places in Oakwood where it might be a compatible use, given the predominantly residential character of the city of Oakland. It's important to note, and I say this as much for people at home as I say it for you on council, that an ordinance to prohibit this from a zoning standpoint, this has to do with the business uses and the compatibility of that fitting into our neighborhoods here. It's not the same as taking a position on the use of medical marijuana or the effectiveness or efficacy of medical marijuana. It's by and large a non-political position at all. This is about zoning and where those businesses are or are not compatible here. This ordinance has already gone through the planning commission process. They've reviewed it, and they came back with a four-to-zero vote unanimously in favor of recommending approval of this. You'll determine tonight, through the course of your public hearing, if you want to go along with that or not. That brings me to the role of council as we're here tonight. Our code requires that you hold a public hearing in order to amend the text of the zoning code, and then at the conclusion of that public hearing, by a simple majority vote, you can approve, you can disapprove, or you can approve the ordinance with modifications. Now, as Vice Mayor Bynum had said when he introduced this tonight, this has been introduced as a first reading, so my thought is that you will conduct the public hearing tonight, take it under advisement, and then revisit this issue for further deliberation when you come back for the second reading next month. But that's the ordinance that's there in front of you. The decision standard that you are to look at is that text amendments are to be reviewed for consistency with the purposes of the zoning code, the comprehensive plan, and the interest to the city of Oakland as a whole, which is generally a broad standard. This is a determination of what is or isn't compatible with our community here in Oakland. At this time, I would open it to any questions that you might have for me.
Questions for our law director?
Very thorough presentation.
Learned more about medical marijuana than I thought was possible, but I thought it was very well done.
Yeah, it's very well done. Sorry, do we involve our Board of Health on these conversations?
To my knowledge, the Board of Health has not been involved.
Okay. I mean, I understand it's sort of a zoning issue, but I wonder about addiction and sort of, you know.
Well, and those are certainly valid concerns. I think most of the issue's having to do with use of medical marijuana. That would be appropriately something that the Board of Health would, as well as the Public Safety Department.
Yeah.
But at this point, we're just looking at it from a zoning perspective and where the business uses would be most compatible.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
Oh, before I forget, I told you I was going to explain about those three words that were added to the ordinance, and I don't want to forget to do that.
Tell us again where those three words are.
This is in 408.2C of the ordinance, if you have it in front of you there, and it's the definition of medical marijuana-related business or home occupation. That definition says that it means a business or home occupation use involving in whole or in part a cultivation, processing, distribution, and/or wholesale or retail sale of medical marijuana, and the words that were added are "on the premises."
Oh, so that's in this ordinance that people have here this evening, but the planning commission did not have those three words in their document.
Correct. That was a clarification to get to the point that, you know, we have a number of medical offices here in Oakwood. We have physicians here, and they may want to counsel or advise their patients on the use of medical marijuana. We don't want this ordinance to discourage that. By the same token, we have accountants who may be doing the books for a medical marijuana business, or lawyers who may be doing incorporation or other legal work, transactional work for medical marijuana businesses. The point of this ordinance is not to discourage those kinds of activities, but to make it clear that it only reaches the dispensing, processing, et cetera, "on the premises." So, I guess if you want to deal medical marijuana out of your accounting office, then you would be restricted by this ordinance, but not if you're offering actual accounting services.
Tax returns are bad enough.
I understand.
My recollection is that the planning commission, in their recommendation to council that they approved, had four specific reasons why they thought this zoning limitation was important to do.
That is a correct statement. I don't have a copy of their recommendation here.
I had it. I've had it twice today, and I've lost both copies. Sorry, Jay.
Thank you.
I think I gave one of them to the Channel 2 reporter.
This was part of their findings of fact in their decision that they issued. They found that the proposed ordinance is consistent with the zoning code, the comprehensive plan, and the interest of the city for the following reasons they did list four, as you noted. One is that medical marijuana facilities, they found that they are incompatible with the residential character of Oakland. They found that medical marijuana facilities are not in the interest of the city due to a lack of state regulations and safeguards. Number three, not consistent because of security concerns and possible negative secondary effects, and number four, that medical marijuana remains illegal under federal law. And this is certainly something that the council could revisit if the federal legal landscape changes, or if there are further changes made in the Ohio landscape that make it such that you would want to revisit this question.
And was there, you were at that meeting?
Of the planning commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Were the security concerns related to the fact that they can't go through our banking system and everything's pretty much a cash business?
That was the line.
Was that the main reason for that particular point?
Now, when they got into the other half of that, when they talked about possible negative secondary effects, one of the planning commission members has specifically seen a number of these facilities in other jurisdictions where they're legal, and his take on that was that they, very often, much like you might see, you know, high school kids hanging outside the local convenience store saying, hey, man, can you buy me a six-pack of beer? There's a lot of that kind of thing going on outside these dispensaries, you know, that they're looking for somebody who does have that card or that recommendation who can go in and maybe buy them something in the store, and so you've got a lot of loitering and that sort of thing going on outside.
I see. Any other questions for our law director? All right. Well, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, well, then, at this time, we will open up a public hearing in accordance with our zoning ordinance, and anyone who wishes to speak either for or opposed to this proposed change to our zoning code are welcome to come down to address council, and I know we have at least one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Again, could you restate your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Eric Great House.
Great House, Great House.
Like you have a great house.
And you do, if you live on Volusia.
Well, you all helped us with, we had a zoning issue last year. We built a new porch, thanks to you all. I have no dog in this fight. I want to state that. I do not have a client that's interested. I would like to caution us to take our time in this and to maybe do what Beaver Creek did, to have like a six-month moratorium or a pause, just because, as the law director, Rob, did a great job, we still don't know what all the rules and regulations are going to be. Just in the last week, they've changed some of the different rules and regulations. They're, you know, growing, they're shrinking in terms of the rules and regulations. So, I would caution the city to put a moratorium, and I would even say to you all, and Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, you all do not even have to do anything. What you are doing is above and beyond what is called for. If someone wants to even have a facility in Oakwood, they have to come before and get a permit from the city. What you all are doing is stopping anybody from coming, and that might be the intent, and if that's the case, that's obviously, that's purview of the council. But we all, you all, do not have to do anything, and I would ask, and I unfortunately was not at the planning commission meeting on January 4th, so this might be a better question to them, but has anybody even requested a permit? Has anybody even shown interest to open a facility in Oakwood? And I ask that to you all as a council.
I believe, to our knowledge, that answer is no.
They've not, and maybe to clarify that, I mean, that's a great point. It was brought up at that hearing. The fact is, most people don't have to come in and apply for a permit at all to open a business. We don't require them to come in and get that, other than to apply for an occupancy permit, a zoning certificate, you know, which is basic code compliance, but they don't have to come in and apply and say, I'm opening this kind of store, or I'm opening that kind of store. They can just do that without a city permit, and so the concern, and your point's well taken, but if someone were to come in today and rent and open storefront in our business district and establish a, say, a retail use, they could do that.
They could not, actually.
I'm not talking about a medical marijuana business.
Oh, sorry.
They could come in and they could open the Acme Head Shop.
Gotcha.
And sell legal rolling papers, bongs, things like that, which are very commonly sold. Someone could come in and open that business today. Once they've established that business, if they then become an approved dispensary under the state formulas when those come out, we would be then hard-pressed to say, that's great, you can't do that, unless we had a law like this already on the books. And I think that's the concern that we're trying to kind of get out in front of.
I've studied this, like you, Mayor, said. I've learned more about medical marijuana, both did excellent presentation, but I've been to all the advisory committee meetings in Columbus. I've studied this extensively. The application process, both for the cultivators and the dispensers, dispensaries for the retail side, and now the processing, have come out, and they're still evolving, and as Rob's excellent presentation said, the deadline for all the rules to be done is later this year. For the cultivators, it's in May, and for the dispensary and the processing, it's in September of this year, and by then, all of the rules have to be stated. But what they have shown or laid out so far is the beginning of the application, and in the application, for all three licenses, you have to have approval from a township or a city having a permit from said township. No one in Oakwood would be able to get that because you all, not only, what I'm saying is, you don't have to ban it, they're going to have to come ask for it. So, with your example, Rob, though it's an excellent one, somebody could set up said retail establishment for anything, but when they would want to go, then go fill out an application, they would have to come to the city and ask for that, and you all would not permit it, correct?
If this passed.
Well, what I'm saying is, you don't even have to pass it. You could just say, we will not issue such permit.
Without some sort of process on the books, there'd be no mechanism to issue a permit at all.
Okay.
To issue or refuse one, really. We'd be having to create some sort of process to do that.
Okay. Excellent point. Did counsel?
I think that's different. The approval, somebody comes to approval just to open a business pending what we're doing tonight, or, I'm sorry, in March.
You agree with what Rob is saying in?
Yeah, I mean, you're saying, I just wonder if there are different criteria to what we're talking about.
Well, if I'm understanding your point, that the state will require, as a condition of them issuing a permit, they will require that a person have a permit from their local jurisdiction saying, I'm approved to do this locally.
That's right.
And so now I'd like my state permit, please.
That's right.
We would have to have some sort of mechanism in place for doing that.
Understood.
And that would be something separate or different from this.
Excellent. That's a fair point. That's an excellent point. So, I guess what I would also recommend then is just a note of caution. I know Beaver Creek has a six-month moratorium, just to continue to see what, you know, the regulations are going to truly be. Again, I have no dog in this fight. I'm not having a client who's interested in being in Oakwood. I just, you know, you mentioned in your excellent State of the City address, you know, undoubtedly, our local government funding is going to continue to be decreased. I would hate for us to, you know, not have any, you know, benefit with this proposed legislation of HB 523 with some tax revenue potentially for the city.
So, I have a question. So, I appreciate you said you don't have a dog in the fight.
I do not.
But I appreciate your presentation, how you've, you know, presented this to us, but I have to ask, are you simply for medical marijuana dispensaries? I'm trying to figure out why you feel it's important to, to be honest with you, make a decision anyway, whether we do something, we don't, or even a six-month. I'm trying to figure out what you're trying to accomplish.
No, I just think, I think at this point, it's still so, the rules aren't even done. The rules won't be done until May for the cultivators and September for the others, and I would hate for us just to say no, especially like an absolute prohibition, because who knows what it will look like? You know, Rob's excellent presentation talked about the banking system. The state is saying it's going to be this great closed-loop banking system, and it will then prevent people coming in with cash. Well, let's see if it gets there, but if we do an absolute prohibition, you're closing the city to any of those businesses. So, I guess where I am is just, why do an absolute prohibition, which I guess you guys could overturn in years in the future, but why at this point do that? Why not say, we want to take a six-month or a year prohibition until the rules and regulations are truly set out?
That's a fair point.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rob, again, excellent presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address council? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Urquhart. I live in 119 Lookout Drive. I was not planning on talking, but as this topic came up and because of the previous intervention, I'm just asking you to consider, one of the key assets of the Oakwood town is the public school and the children, and I just highly ask you to consider that in your position and definitely in favor of the prohibition of the medical marijuana in the Oakwood.
Okay. Any questions for her? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address council on this matter? Do we need to clarify that? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sure I have another.
Did you get her correct name? Okay, all right, just for the record. Okay. Yes.
Ellen Walters, 474 Lookout Ridge. I, again, wasn't going to speak, but I just feel compelled now. I think that the fact that these changes could come about, as this gentleman mentioned, behooves us to even more strenuously prohibit it from the outset. I've had children that went through the system, my in-laws went through the system, I've lived here my whole life, and I agree that Oakwood's a residential community. This is not what we need in our community at all, these dispensaries, and they can certainly have them in Dayton or other surrounding areas if they feel the need that they have to have them here, but I do not feel like we need this in Oakwood at all, and I think just nip it in the bud, prohibit it from the outset.
Was that a pun? Was that a pun?
No. But just, you know, prohibit all the possible errors that could happen.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then, we will close the public hearing. Our process will be, council will take this under advisement. Our next council meeting, I believe, is March 6.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, could I, just wanted to respond to one of the other points that was raised, just so council has this before you begin your deliberations on this, and that is that with respect to the point of going with a moratorium versus an outright prohibition, the moratorium would, and the reason that I wrote this in the way that I did without doing the moratorium is that that links you to a specific timeframe, that, say, six months from now, we need to revisit this question or adopt additional legislation to extend it or what have you. or adopt additional legislation to extend it, or, or what have you. Council can revisit this at any time if you adopt a prohibition. And I, I don't want to create the impression that that's an absolute, that once that's part of the zoning code, it can never change. That can always be revisited and changed in the same manner that we're changing the zoning code now. So you would have the flexibility to revisit this in the future if the regulations come out and you say, "Hey, they've got tight enough controls and they've, they've made this work in a way that we think this use would be compatible here in the city of Oakwood." You'd be able to do that. The, the big concern behind doing it as a prohibition, and this gets into very boring planning and zoning lawyer speak, but we think about things called prior non-conforming uses, which is what most people call something getting grandfathered in. And, and the thought is that if it's not, if it's not prohibited at this point, either through a moratorium or through an outright prohibition, we could be creating a situation where someone would establish that use. They would, you know, get in under the wire and establish that use and be grandfathered in in the future, and we could potentially be stuck with it. And so that's, I just, I'm sharing that so that you understand the impetus behind this.
And is this some of the discussions that the various law directors that you associate with in other cities, that's one of the things they're weighing?
That's one of the things that we talk about, the, the prior non-conforming use aspect of this.
Sounds like a great meeting you go to.
It's, it's barrel monkeys.
Okay. Great. Any, any other comments for our law director? Okay, so we'll, we'll close this public hearing, and then we will, uh, address this issue at our next, next meeting.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to add was that, as with any issue that we discuss here, particularly when it's, it's pushed off to the next meeting, basically, for a second reading, that's an opportunity for us not only to deliberate and to, to take in the information that we've gotten here, but it also is an opportunity for anybody out there who would like to contact us directly. As the mayor mentioned in his State of the City, local government is the most accountable government that you have. We are your neighbors. We are the people that you will see in Dorothy Lane. You'll see us at the libraries. You'll see us out and about. So if this is something that you would like to talk with us about, each of our cell phone numbers are available on the city website, and we are all approachable. So feel free to, to talk to us before the next meeting, which is on March 6th.
Okay, thank you. I've lost my agenda. Here we go. So now we have a resolution authorizing a labor contract for our public safety officers and lieutenants. And Vice Mayor Byington has that.
Yes, Your Honor. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Oakwood Lodge Number 107, representing the public safety officers and lieutenants. The current collective bargaining agreement covering our public safety officers expires on October 26th, two thou- expired on October 26, 2016. And our current agreement with the public safety lieutenants expired on November 3, 2016. Late last year, the city entered into negotiations for a new agreement with FOP Lodge Number 107, which is the Union Representative for Public Safety Officers. The lieutenants were not part of this original negotiations because they were in the process of change, yeah, changing their union representation for the, oh, from the Ohio Patrol Benevolent Association to the FOP. The city and the FOP were unable to come to terms for a new agreement. And pursuant to state law, the matter was submitted to a fact finding on January 25th of 2017. After six hours of settlement discuss- discussions, the FOP agreed on terms for a new three-year agreement for the public safety officers. Shortly after the fact finding, the lieutenants also agreed to the same terms. Mayor Duncan and myself have reviewed the new agreement as members of the council's finance committee. And this resolution will authorize the city manager to sign those agreements. These agreements provide our public safety officers and lieutenants with responsible wage increases over the next three years that are consistent with wage increases provided to all other city employee groups. They will receive increases of 2.75% in 2017, 2.85% in 2018, and 2.95% in 2019. We would like to commend Assistant City Manager Jay Weiskircher for his efforts on the city's behalf, and also our public safety employees for their help in continuing, uh, coming to this agreement. I would like to make the motion that council adopt this resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions for Vice Mayor Byington? The only thing that I would like to add is, is part of the last five years in dealing with financial difficulties, every, every union bargaining group, of which we have four, as well as our non-union employees, had two years of frozen salaries. They were staggered over this, over that last five years. And historically, Jay has dealt with union negotiations of the four unions at different, different years. But because we were dealing with this, I believe you were dealing with all four union contracts this fall. Is that accurate? And it's not just congratulations. I mean, you know, it's, it's unbelievable the efforts that you have done in, in dealing with the sheer volume of that. And getting all of our union and non-union people essentially on a similar wage, wage scale. That is huge. Almost, we have not, in the history of Oakwood, had, at some various points in time in our past, we've not had great relations with some of our collective bargaining units. But I would say, over the last five to maybe eight years, you know, again, through turnover and through just explaining our financial situation, our employees get it, whether they're union or non-union. You know, the public safety officers, you know, if you just think about them being cross-trained in, in police, fire, and paramedic, and, you know, that is, that is a skill that's hard to find. When we replace them as retirement, sometimes we'll find somebody that, you know, is a firefighter, EMT, but doesn't have the, the police academy training. So we invest in, in all of those people. Sometimes we'll find a, a police officer from another jurisdiction, but we'll have to get, send them to the fire and EMT training. These folks, you know, do an outstanding job for our city. They, they understand what a, what a great opportunity it is to, to work in the city of Oakwood. And I congratulate them for, you know, going to the table and, and entering into a fair agreement with the city. So, I, again, I, again, I can't say enough about your efforts, Jay.
Exactly.
So, bravo. So with that, no other comments? Laurie, would you call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And without further ado, we'll have Jay tell us all the other great things he's been doing for our city. He's our Assistant City Manager, and he, you'll see that not only does he negotiate union contracts, but he does so much more. So welcome, Jay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your slide, this first slide's prettier than our law director's slide, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for inviting me this evening to give you an update on some of the projects that we have been working on for the past few months. Much of what I'm going to say this evening has already been touched upon at one time or another during the course of the meeting. So given the lateness of the hour, I will move my, through my presentation fairly quickly here. The first thing I wanted to mention to you was the labor negotiations that we just talked about. I'm not going to go through all the details here. Simply to say that for the next three years, we certainly have a labor piece here. We've got all four employee unions in the fold. Council was very generous last November, also passed legislation granting pay increases to the non-union employees for 2017 and 2018. So as Mayor Duncan just mentioned, over the next three years, all of our union employees will receive the same percentage increases, which is something we have been working towards for a long time. And finally, we're able to accomplish that over the past few months. And I would say this, that on a going-forward basis, I think that everyone who has the good fortune to, to work here for the city of Oakwood appreciates what they have here, what a wonderful community it is. And they also understand that the city has other economic things that are important to us and initiatives. And so, not only is it, you know, there are fair ways to treat the employees, but you have to give consideration that the city also has other economic needs, and you need to balance those economic needs with making sure employees are taken care of in wages and benefits. And I think over the years, council has done a wonderful job in that area. And again, we appreciate your efforts, and so do all the other 80-plus full-time employees and 12-plus regular part-time employees who are lucky enough to, to work here. Also wanted to touch very briefly, again, on the Old River Athletic Facility. And again, the mayor mentioned this during his State of the City message, so I'm not going to spend too much time, except to reiterate that, as Mayor Duncan mentioned, this is a four, $4.2 million project, 90% of the costs of which are funded through private donations. And I'm not sure that even the people who started out, the athletic boosters, Mr. Reifert, I'm not sure that they thought they would get to the position they were in terms of fundraising. But again, that shows the generosity of people who live in this community or people whose lives have been impacted by the city of Oakwood in one way or another over the years. So kudos to all the good work they did. We had a groundbreaking in August of 2016. Thanks to some very good weather in the fall, and also so far in the winter months, we've gotten a lot accomplished. We have an excellent contractor who's got excellent subs working on this project. And to date, we've been able to finish the synthetic turf playing surface. It's fully installed. The base course of asphalt is installed for the track. As soon as we get three or four days of weather in the 50s, hopefully the first part of April or so, they will put down the rubberized top coat on the track, and the track will be ready to go. The bleachers have been completed. That'll provide seating for 700 to 750 patrons. And the parking lots have been completed as well. Not only are the asphalt down, but even in some of this cold weather, they've been able to get the parking blocks in. They've been able to do most of the striping. There's still a little bit of striping work that needs to be done. And some trees have been planted throughout the lots as well. So from a parking standpoint, we're good. We've got parking enough to accommodate 350 vehicles. So from a parking standpoint, we'll no longer have to worry about bar- borrowing places from either the University of Dayton or from Cox Media. Here's a picture of the facility. This is from a personal drone owned by Greg Getz, who is the maintenance superintendent at the high school. This is a shot looking to the east. As you can see, all of the green, the, the turf field is in. You see a lot of lines on the turf. As Mayor Duncan pointed out earlier, that's because not only are you going to play soccer there, but also field hockey and lacrosse. So it's, it's truly a multi-purpose facility. You see the outline of the, what is going to be the eight-lane track once the final top coat goes down and the lines are painted. You see to the right there, that white area, that's the pole vault area. At the bottom, down here, is the, the bleachers that have been installed. Over to the left here, this longer building, this is the storage concession and restroom building. This particular photograph was taken about three weeks ago, so the building is fully under roof. It's also heated now. The plumbing is pretty much 90% completed. Contractors are in the process of doing painting. And within the next couple of weeks, they'll start installing fixtures and doors and things along those lines. So hopefully by the end of February, that building, excuse me, will be completed as well. This week, they're starting fence installation on the project, field lighting, and press box installation. So if we get some good weather between now and the end of February, I think at the end of February, first part of March, we'll be in pretty good shape for the dedication ceremony that is scheduled for March 11th. After that, probably most of the work that'll take place would be the, the track work, just finishing up the track. And a lot of the grass areas that have been disturbed, the playing fields, those will be, topsoil will be put down, and they'll be reseating. As Norv mentioned in the city manager's newsletter, last week, our own crews demolished the old restroom storage building down there. They did a nice job with that. They're in the process right now of putting down some topsoil, and that will also be seeded when the weather is appropriate. So this project is moving along as planned, probably even a little bit of, ahead of schedule. So we're all very, very pleased with, with that. Lots of things going on in the Far Hills Business District. Just wanted to touch upon a few of those items. We've had some businesses leave the business district. Petco left at the end of 2016. They are now up at Town and Country. There's around 6,650 square feet of space there. That building owner is currently in discussions with a number of interested tenants. We should know more about the future use of that building, probably in the very near, near future here. I would also say about that Petco building, it formerly had the, the red, large red awning on it. That awning was taken down. There's some interesting architects, there's Marquee there, some other interesting architecture there. They are going to do some facade improvements for whoever moves into that space. So I think that'll be a welcome addition in that area. So that'll all be taking place in the months and, and weeks to come. First Financial Bank, they were formerly across the street in the, on the ground floor of the Gutman Building there, at 2331 Far Hills. They closed a number of their Dayton locations, and they did close the one here in, in Oakwood. Park Avenue Antiques and Blue Turtle Toys. You probably saw the articles in last week's Oakwood Register. Park Avenue Antiques, they're downsizing their space. They will be leaving the Far Hills Avenue Business District, but they will be staying in the area. Blue Turtle Toys, the owner, Carolyn Meyer of Blue Turtle Toys, she's going to be retiring in late May. I think she hopes to be able to sell the business, and somebody will keep it open. But if not, she will be closing up shop in late May. We have had some arrivals and relocations in the district. Gregory Salon of Oakwood, which is formerly in the 2600 building, is moving into the space previously occupied by Rife Jewellers. So that's good. That space has been vacant now for about 18 months. And Remax is opening an office at the former First Financial Bank location. You've probably read some things, and I think there's something maybe in the afternoon edition of the Dayton Daily News, maybe the online version, about Grater's. Their lease in their current space expires at the end of March. We have been working very hard with the building owner to try to keep the Grater's location open. I know the, the building owner has offered them several options in terms of upgrading that facility. Don't think we know right now where that might be going, but I would just let council know, and also our citizens, that we feel that Grater's is a very important asset to the Far Hills Avenue Business District, and we'll do everything we can to, to keep them in town. One of the other things that just happened last week, the 2600 building was purchased. It was previously owned by a corporation in Minneapolis, Minnesota. It was purchased by a group of local investors. We're not exactly sure what their plans are for the building. I think that's something that they're still working through themselves. So we will know more in the future. But we have been told that, in all likelihood, there'll certainly be some exterior improvements. And they would entertain anyone who might be interested in opening a restaurant, a food-type of establishment in the former Seetu space on the ground floor. There's a new leasing agent for the building, so we're looking for some big improvements down the road here for the 2600 building. I think the local ownership will be a, a good thing for everyone concerned. And lastly, something that's been very important to this community for a long number of years, the Hollinger Memorial Tennis Center. The mayor touched on this, again, during his State of the City address. We've been meeting with members of Hollinger for more than the past year or so. They've had some issues because this is a private club in terms of making their budget work. So we sat down to see if there were some benefits from the city getting involved. We worked- We worked through some of those issues and arrived at an agreement just the last quarter of 2016. They conveyed the club property to the city of Oakwood. It'll be converted from a private club to a membership-based public resource. Memberships will now be handled through the city's Leisure Services Department. Carolyn Hurstaff, I know, sent out membership letters last week to current members, and they're all getting, already getting some responses back, so that is good news. Any money that the city collects through memberships, we will use to contract with the Hollinger Tennis Club for ongoing maintenance and repairs and day-to-day operations. So, in terms of city funds, it should really be revenue-neutral. Any monies that we get through the memberships will be used to operate the club. So, we do not see this as being a burden on city resources. This initial agreement has a term of ten years, and there's also an option with five one-year renewal options. So, to the extent that we've got some flexibility depending on what happens in the future. We're hoping that with the marketing efforts of the Leisure Services Department, some of the things they do with the websites and some of the other things through the Leisure Services Department, that we will be able to grow the membership. And if we're able to do that, certainly that'll be good for Hollinger and also good for the city as well. So, real quickly, that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Questions for Jay? I had, I had a couple points I wanted to clarify. It's my understanding that when we were doing the Old River, the Lane Stadium down there, we had a lot of excess topsoil. What are we going to do with all that excess topsoil?
We are keeping some. We will use it as part of a Shroyer Road project. Maybe Norv can touch on that in a little more detail. But we'll be creating some islands along Shroyer Road, and we'll be using some of the topsoil for that. Most of it will be reused at the site. Again, there's been a lot of good grass that's been disturbed, so that topsoil will be used for that purpose and also general regrading. UD has expressed an interest in some of the topsoil, so to the extent we have some topsoil left, we're going to offer that to UD. And there's also some other takers out there that if we do have any topsoil left over that...
Okay. I think the point is just another creative way to either save or make money, and we're constantly looking for that. The other thing that I found out during this business district that, where the complete pet mart was, it's my understanding of the history of that building, at one point, it was a Kroger grocery store. Were you aware of that?
I, I was not aware of that. When I came...
I would have thought you'd have been here when Kroger was...
When I, when I came...
Obviously, it was a long time ago.
When I came to town, that was a design forum, I think, was located in that.
Yeah, right. And prior to that, I think it was a Kroger. And then, I just also just wanted to point out that, that I have reached out on a couple of occasions to the management of Graders so far without success, but I offer to meet them anytime, anywhere to convince them that, that this is a great community asset that we would like for them to consider staying. I pointed out to them in my last communication that I paid for a hundred percent of my college making two dollars an hour at Baskin Robbins. Now, that's impossible to do today, but not only are, you know, you have the best ice cream in town, but they hire our students so that they can help make some money to pay for their college. They probably are going to need a scholarship, but, but I just, I just pointed that out to them, that that's, that's a great opportunity as well. All right. Anything else for Jay? Then if that's the case, we'll go to city manager comments.
Your honor, I will be very short tonight, given the hour here.
Do you recall one year ago tonight where we were? We were in the longest city council meeting in Oakwood history. We got done at 2:00 AM.
No, that was February, February twenty-second.
Well, it was the February meeting.
So, you're giving me plenty of time?
You got all the time you want, yeah.
Couple of quick comments and follow-up to Jay's about Shroyer Road. Yes, we're using, reusing about eleven hundred cubic yards of topsoil from Old River, and it's excellent topsoil. It's been stockpiled at the Irving Avenue Soccer Field. If you drive by there, you'll see a big mountain of soil there, and it's standing ready for the contractor who will start that project around May of this year. And that, that job will go till about October. There are sixteen race center medians. They're eight feet wide. They vary in length from roughly a hundred feet to almost two hundred feet long. And we're putting thirty inches deep of topsoil throughout that entire area and all sixteen center medians. So, that'll be an excellent place to initially grow grass, and then down the road, perhaps plant some trees and other sort of landscaping that we might, might consider. So, you know, our citizens have seen ongoing work on Shroyer Road that, again, has primarily been Vectren and their contractors replacing the gas infrastructure. That work is now essentially completed. A little bit of cleanup left to do and a couple places to restore, but basically all of the gas infrastructure is now rebuilt. And the city Public Works Department, about two, three weeks ago, started adjusting sanitary and storm manholes on that street. If you drive that frequently, you will have noticed that quite a number of those manholes were an inch or so depressed, and, you know, when they're in the traveled lane of your tire, of course, that's a thumper every time you hit one. So, and also when, when those things drop down, there's some structural problem below. So, we've been cutting those, the castings out, resetting them, and putting them at the proper grade, which will basically set that up for meeting the new asphalt when it's milled and overlaid later in the summer. So, it's all prep work, again, for the big project, starting in May. We did have a pre-bid meeting with contractors for this job last week, and the bid's going to be in a couple weeks, I expect. We'll probably get at least three bids, maybe four. So, I think there's good, good interest in it. And again, as you know, it's a joint project being done with the city of Kettering, and goes all the way from Delwood, or a little bit north of Delwood in Oakwood, all the way down to Stroop Road in Kettering.
So, Kettering and Oakwood will decide jointly?
That's correct. It's one bid. The bid itself is split up into the two parts, but it is one bid package.
Okay.
And then finally, the, our annual sidewalk curb and apron program is, the prep work for that is underway. This year, it's in the western part of Oakwood, essentially all the land west, in Oakwood west of Far Hills Avenue. There are a lot of areas, if you think about that part of Oakwood, that don't have sidewalks and even some concrete curb, but it is a big area, and it'll be a decent-sized program again. Public Works Foreman Dave Shuey is overseeing that job this year, and he started to mark the sidewalk, and we'll get quantities together and bid that project in March, and then notify our residents in April of responsibilities for certain sidewalk repairs. So, that's underway, and that's all I have.
Any questions or comments for our city manager? Then it's time for council comments. Mr. Epley?
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the late hour, I have no comments.
That's the most you've said. Councilmember Hilton?
I don't have any comments tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, I just have one quick story that wants to be, wanted to be shared. It's under the category of appreciation by local businesses. I received a call about two weeks ago from Teresa Hammond, owner of Ashley's Bakery, actually across the street here. And she was very excited to tell me a story about, right out in front of her shop, was some concrete work that needed to be done, and just repair in the concrete. And there were some employees out there, and the preliminary work was done, let's say on a Wednesday or Thursday, and that didn't take very long at all. Well, let's go, one of the employees, you know, knew that Ashley's and Lulabelle are closed on a Monday, and went back to the foreman and said, "We should do this work on a Monday when these businesses are closed." Because it was literally right in front of their business and in the alley right there. And she was just so impressed that they took the initiative to mention that, you know, whereas other large cities, I, you know, may say, "We're just going to go and do this work because it needs to be done." They, they were conscious enough to know when they were closed. She, it's one little simple decision, really, they were so impressed by that, because it obviously doesn't disrupt their parking, their traffic, all the kids that go there at lunch. And she was just very appreciative and wanted to thank publicly, and she asked me to do it, obviously, the public works employees that work on that project. And she, she and the owner of Lulabelle were just very thankful the way that was handled.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byington?
Yeah, three quick things. One, unfortunately, we are being bombarded by a lot of junk in social media currently. And, but I, I do want to stress that there are a lot of good sites out there to check out. One, I'd like to encourage everybody, is the city of Oakwood's Facebook page. There's a lot of information that is distributed that, through that site. Also, as we heard earlier from Sustainable Design, Green Oakwood has a Facebook page, so I would encourage people to check that out. On February eighteenth, the, at the Oakwood Community Center, we have a blood drive, so if you're able to, we would appreciate folks signing up for times there. That's from nine AM to noon. And then finally, on March fourth, we have our new residents breakfast. That's something I think invitations have already gone out to all the folks who've moved into the city in the last year. And we look forward to meeting all of our new neighbors and telling them about all the great services, and our department heads make the breakfast, and it's always a great time. So, I encourage people to show up for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I just have a couple as well. I need to put my glasses on to read these, but I got a note from an elderly resident who had a non-emergency call from our Oakwood Public Safety Officers, and she wanted to thank Officer Brian Pond. He was polite, professional, and very helpful. Our thanks to him, to you, and Oakwood's Fire and Safety Department, a very valuable asset for our city. And then, we had another note from someone who was on Shroyer Road and was having some issues with the natural gas project. And Tom Long, one of our foremen in Public Works, came out and immediately resolved that issue, and they wrote, "Mr. Long is an outstanding public servant and a true credit to the Oakwood Public Works Department. In these days of government lethargy..." Lethargy? Lethargy?
Lethargy.
Lethargy, "and corporate disdain for customers, it is refreshing and heartening to encounter a gentleman and a professional public employee such as Mr. Long." And then just last week, our city manager got an email from a citizen, says, "I need your help, please." Norv received the email at 11:05 AM. Tom Long was sent to the person, and by 11:54, the issue was resolved, and the citizen, who was unhappy based on the first email, was now very happy. And so, this just goes, again, it's just, like Rob said, it's just an indication of just the dedication and commitment that our employees, the city of Oakwood, have for our fine city. And then the only other thing I'll say is, in Governor Kasich's new budget that he just introduced, he has this concept called centralized collection of municipal income tax. It is yet another bad idea that's coming out of Columbus, and so we may have to get the band back together again. But we are watching it closely, and I'm going to be working closely with the Ohio Municipal League to see if we can head that bad idea off at the pass. There'll be more to come on that, I'm sure. So, with that, our next meeting is going to be, what did I say?
March sixth.
March sixth, Monday, March sixth, so we are adjourned.